Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, April 18th, 2024. It's 6:00 PM. We'd like to start off with a prayer by Pastor Van. Say your last name?
Marsha.
Marsha, from Fellowship Bible Church.
Heavenly Father, we pause now this evening, grateful for another beautiful day that you've given us, grateful for this place in which we live, aware fully, Lord, of responsibility that these individuals have who are seated to have oversight of our community decision-making. Please give wisdom. We recognize that this is not an easy task. We thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that we have for living in this part of the country. We thank you that tonight ours is a quiet community. We take that as a gift from you. We pray for our sheriff and our police who watch over us and first responders even through the night tonight. Father, within this room tonight, we pray for wisdom. We pray for grace. We pray for forbearance. We pray for effective decision-making. And Father, it's with humble hearts that we come before you in the name of our Lord Jesus, our Savior, and ask these things tonight, asking for your wisdom that is from above, peaceable and pure. In Jesus' name we ask this.
Amen. If you could remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to be just as one.
Please remain standing for West Virginia.
A pledge of allegiance to the God of West Virginia, which serves as a constant reminder that mountain climbers are always free, which stands as a symbol of their testing compasses for all forests, the rich veins of coal, and the pride of people.
Approval of minutes for April 4th, 2024. Are there any objections? Mr. Chairman, I noticed a couple issues there. We might want to just hold to review items number five and number nine, just to make sure that they're 100% accurate with the audio visual recording. So if we could hold, I don't know if that's an objection or a motion to table, whatever's necessary. We could, we could go back and double check five and nine and present these at the next meeting. That's fine.
I'll have some, okay, on page six, at the very bottom, I think the gentleman's name, one of the nominees was Colin Sign. It says Coin Sign.
Yeah.
At the very bottom.
Colin, C-O-L-I-N, yes.
Um, just look through here. Um, I would just like to have a request that the minutes on page 10, the agenda item, solicitation of human resource manager. I'd just like to have a little more detail in there. I think we tabled that pending an EEOC compliance question or the classification for advertising that position. Let's see, and then the joint session of the Jefferson County Planning Commission. It says no action, which we didn't take action. But I think we discussed potentially having another joint session because the attendance for most of the planning commissioners was low. It was a daytime meeting. I think we discussed possibly having a session in the evening for hopefully better participation. And it would be nice to recognize those that participated in that. So now we had Commissioner Tab, Majdi, Kraus, Jackson. And then from the planning commission, we only had Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Hefesay present.
Okay.
I do have a couple of corrections as well. On the front page, page one of 10, the prayer was offered. The name is correct, the position is correct, but the church is Grace Baptist Church in Kearneysville. And then on page five of 10, public comment was received by Jacqueline Milliron. Jacqueline is misspelled. It's J-A-C-Q-U-E-L-Y-N. And the name of Dr. Christine Wimmer. It's W-I-M-E-R, not N-E-R. Thank you very much.
All right.
I, I had to also, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
When we get around to where the budget revisions were submitted and signed off on, the date on it says 4/4/23.
Yes.
Instead of 4/4/24.
Yes.
And this is the budget revision. One, page one, revision number four. And at the top, it says fiscal year 2024. So it was signed. It just says 4/4/23.
Yeah, on the front and the back.
On both of those revisions.
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there are no objections, we'll make those changes and have a clean copy at our next meeting. That's okay. All right. Approval of requisitions, April 18th, 2024, amount $36,635.19. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of counts payable for April 11th, 2024, amount $356,153.98. If there are no objections, that is approved. Or counts payable on April 18th, 2024, amount of $118,394.82. If there are no objections, that is approved for manual checks for April 12th, 2024, in amount $205,905.25. If there are no objections, that is approved for manual checks for April 19th, 2024, in amount of $117,216.88. If there are no objections, that is approved for approval payroll, April 12th, 2024, in amount of $319,090.71. If there are no objections, that is approved. Are there any announcements here? None? Will we want to public comment? You come up and state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes. We'll start off with Barbara Fuller.
Hi, my name is Barbara Fuller and I live in Kearneysville. We've been hearing a lot about how everybody wants to make Ms. Jackson and Ms. Kraus give their salaries back. So I figured I'd do a little math. A commissioner's salary is $45,000. Fifty-two weeks, that's roughly $865 a week. Seven days, that's $123.63 a day. Twenty-four hours, that's $5.15 that your time is worth. Sixty minutes, roughly 10 cents a minute. Fancy that. Each of the minutes, meetings that you had missed were roughly 15 minutes. So at 10 cents a minute, that's $1.50 each times four. I am going to cover the $6 for each of you to pay your time back, please. I will give it to you and you can send it to whom you would like to hand it to. Obviously, that would be Mr. Porter. There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we're going to Brian Parrish.
One thing I would like to say is while we're hearing public comment, I think it's important we put our phones down and pay attention to the people giving comment.
That's what I'm doing, so I'm turning my phone.
Yeah, mine will be good. You really want to hear this. My name is Brian Parrish. I live in Ransum, 118 East Park Avenue here in Ransum. I come today and this thing, some of you, it's the first time I've come for you, but Ms. Tab, I've been here before. On December the 13th, the chief deputy of the sheriff's department received a phone call from his girlfriend in Berkeley County about her car being towed. This chief deputy talks to the tow truck driver along with this female and threatened the tow truck driver and they're going to bring this person out there and that person. This is happening in Berkeley County. And this, this chief deputy's in Jefferson County. So the chief deputy, the lady gets in the car, so they couldn't take the car. And so they waited for the chief deputy to get there and they berate the tow truck driver. And the tow truck driver called a manager from the, from the towing business to come out there to be a witness to what's going on with this individual's car. And after the deputy gets there, he proceeds to berate the driver and the manager. Well, two state police officers showed up on that night and they had to tell this chief deputy that he needed to calm down and, and be professional. So I don't know if it's on video, whatever happened, but really need to be looked into. You know, here's a chief deputy of Jefferson County that's supposed to be in a leadership role to be, for somebody to follow and give guidance to other deputies in this county. And, you know, driving across to another county to handle his girlfriend's business, one profession. I come before the county commissioners about an incident that happened in front of my house one day. And a girl got beat in front of my house and I just sat down, was getting ready to eat dinner and I had to go outside to break it up. I called 911 on three occasions that day to try to get help for this individual. Before I called the third time, I get in my vehicle, I drive three tenths of a mile down the street. There are set five sheriff's deputies in the Mexican restaurant. I drive another two tenths of a mile and find the ransom police at Andy's. So a girl gets beat in front of my house and you call 911 for help. And this, this is the help you receive. Now, this could have been your daughter, granddaughter, or anybody, one of your brothers that this happened to. And it just happened to be the girl had a young infant child sitting in a car seat, in a backseat. And the wind had got busted out on the kid. Well, the girl waited and waited. She finally gave up waiting in the home for the help. She, she went down and she parked at Pizza City. And so after I called the third time.
You can finish up, sir.
Okay. I'll come back for another time.
Okay, that's right. That's right. All right. Next is Mary G.
Thank you. My name is Mary G. I live in Charlestown. I'm here tonight to tell you about a transmission project that will take the property of hundreds of Jefferson County residents, including myself and my family. PJM has a new transmission project called MARL. It is path 2.0 on steroids. It starts in Western Pennsylvania, comes through Maryland, West Virginia, goes through Winchester, Virginia, then cuts through Jefferson County to end in Loudoun. It will take the 138 kilovolt wooden pole power lines and turn them into 500 kilovolt super transmission towers that are bigger than the Dominion Transmission Towers we now have. They require an additional right-of-way easement of 150 feet. There will be no homes, no barns, no sheds, no garages, no boats, no trailers, no mobile homes, no playgrounds, no wells, no septic tanks, and no drain fields in the 150-feet easement. But people will still have to pay full property taxes and maintain their property according to PJM standards. I have one of these wooden poles in my backyard. This is me. This is who it will affect. I am familiar with easements. The Dominion Transmission Tower is behind my property right now. They put a yellow or orange sticker tape on my fence. They spray my field with pesticides. I have lost my boar goats. We can't have them anymore. They told me to cut down my trees. I had to because they have their easement. Now, here comes PJM with an additional 150-feet easement. It'll take my land. It'll take my neighbor's land, his horses, the neighbor next to them. This is unacceptable. The transmission line is being sent to Loudoun County data centers. I am not a Loudoun County resident. I am a West Virginian. I did not vote on these transmission lines. I have no say on them. I have no say on the data centers. Who put them there? Virginia. Who's paying for it? West Virginia. My daughters, 14 and 16, have grown up their whole lives on my property. How dare these people think they can take it from me or anyone else in Jefferson County? We are not Virginia's whipping boy. We are not dumb hicks. We need to stand up against this. We cannot let this happen. If Virginia wants these transmission lines, Virginia needs to own them. Please stand with me. This is not acceptable. Thank you.
Well said.
Honorable members of, I'm sorry, I'm Richard G. I live in Charlestown, out in Summit Point, somewhere near my wife. Honorable members of Jefferson County Commission Board, I come before you today with grave concerns about the detrimental impact the recent surge in solar panel installations is having on our beautiful county. Let us first examine the conversion of over 3,300 acres of rolling farmland to solar panels. Where is the sustainability in this project? What measures are in place to carefully monitor the stormwater runoff and protect our rivers and creeks such as Ebbets Run, Shenandoah, Potomac? The Baker Project, for instance, has done little to prevent mud and sediment from polluting the Shenandoah and the Potomac. This is unacceptable. The streams and rivers that define the character of Jefferson County are being degraded and harmed. And the renowned fishing and the hunting that draw visitors to this region is, is leaving the county because of these solar farms that people want to put in solar panel installations. They're not farms. Furthermore, the large construction companies installing these solar arrays like De Lauder and Sons, who has their sign out there at Baker, are raining and dragging mud and debris into our roads without impunity and no meaningful enforcement. How long can our county survive this rampant disregard for our natural resources and outdoor recreation economy? De Lauder and Sons is not even a local company. They're a Frederick, Maryland-based company. They do business all the time in Montgomery County. They do business all over the state of Maryland. They're very aware of the impact that they're putting on our environment, yet nobody is out there to do anything about it. Secondly, I'm deeply troubled by the lack of requirements these solar companies have to restore our land to the original state once their contracts expire. If these corporations choose to go bankrupt or simply abandon their projects, Jefferson County will be left to clean the mess up for generations to come. We cannot allow our beautiful countryside to be irreparable, scarred, in the name of short-term profits. Finally, I must raise the issue of public safety. Jefferson County currently lacks any firefighting capabilities to contend with a blaze at any of the solar installations. The lithium-ion batteries require special firefighting training as well as equipment to put the fire out. Recently, there was a fire in upstate New York. It took everyone four days to put the fire out. Is Charlestown going to become the next East Palestine, Ohio? In conclusion, the people of Jefferson County deserve better. The money made today from these solar projects and all the people making money off of the projects need to understand that there'll never be enough to undo the long-term damage to our land, our water, and our way of life. I implore you, the commissioners, to demand greater transparency, stronger environmental protections, and a clear plan with transparency on the eventual decommissioning of these solar arrays. The beauty and characteristics of Jefferson County are at stake, and we cannot afford to let it be destroyed. The time is now. Thank you.
Jacqueline Milliron.
The West Virginia Ethics Commission rendered a decision in case 2024-02 regarding the Open Meetings Act application to committees of the Planning Commission. If the committees are meeting to acquire information, then they are not subject to Open Meetings Act requirement of, for public notice. If the committees are meeting and a recommendation to the Planning Commission is made based on information gathered, then they are subject to Open Meetings Act. A quorum of the committee is defined by the quorum of the committee members and not the planning commissioners. The question is why meet with staff and contractors privately? And why was the public told the information of those meetings were private? The Solar Facilities Committee and the Ordinance Rewrite Committee made recommendations to the Planning Commission in the past. I am requesting that this county commission reinstitute the Commissioners Report section of the agenda for the convenes to the public to know attendance and voting records where the elected county commissioners may have dual votes regarding similar topics. The Jefferson County Planning Commission deleted the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Citizen Stakeholder Committee. I am requesting that this county commission reinstate at commission level and economically and geographically diverse stakeholder committee to openly review changes. While public input meetings were managed earnestly by staff, the effectiveness of the public input was significantly watered down by planning commissioners having the final say. I am requesting that all county references to solar facilities, farms, compounds be instead referred to as solar plants and that this commission require similar regulatory practices as for the existing coal and gas energy plants. Solar plants contain known toxic chemical hazmat components, potential catastrophic fire and safety issues, environmental mitigation requirements, and unknown debris contingencies and destructive weather events over their useful life. It is at least our government can do, given the ill-fated solar text amendments. Let's put the horse before the cart. I am requesting an independent audit of the county finances for at least the last four years to numerous anomalies that took place during the year's budget session. This is a request for consideration that the county commission reconsider the Hilltop Tiff to exclude water and sewer infrastructure, which should be properly executed using Title 150 Water and Sewer Rules, as did Rockwell. Round two of the interviews for the nominees for the county CTUP position. There are three published requirements and this commission is obligated to send not more than three to the Charlestown City Council. One of the candidates fails requirement number two and three to be a current CTUP sewer customer and former PSD sewer customer. The official, the official residence of another applicant was questioned. At the last meeting, only one applicant who was interviewed supplied proof of satisfying all three requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christine.
Please amend the April 4th meeting minutes to include the full Tiff application as it was presented to the Jefferson County Commission by Mr. Stump. It is appalling that the application for the Tiff was approved after the commission hired counsel to evaluate and advise them but before that counsel could read and evaluate the documents and before counsel could advise the commission or make any necessary changes that would ensure that the document was protective of the county. How could the county commission approve an application and call it materially complete when the expert you hired had not been given the time or the opportunity to read it? You all have the welfare of the county and its financial health in your hands. Please protect the county thoroughly and thoroughly evaluate with your counsel, not Mr. Stump, not the Hilltop House Counsel, but the Jefferson County Commission's counsel for future proposals and before any bonds and before the approval of any bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Statik.
I'm Kristi Statik of Harper's Berry. All five commissioners unanimously voted for an audit in March. At the March 21st County Commission meeting, staff explained after a phone call to the state auditor's office that it was decided that no audit was necessary. Would someone please explain how staff's opinion overrides the votes of all five commissioners? This is concerning to the citizens of our county. I have too many financial concerns to list in a three-minute public comment. I am simply here to reiterate what I said on March 21st's public comment. It was clear from attending many of the budget meetings that our finances are in disarray and many citizens would like a full forensic audit of the county's finances. Five commissioners felt the same and voted as such in March. I would like to know how we went from being $4.3 million in the red to a reporter finding $1 million in one of our meetings, which was very exciting, but also very strange, to a data entry error resulting in a large sum of money being found in one of the final budget meetings. I would also like to know why last year's budget meeting was never signed off on, sorry, budget report was never signed off on. Mostly, I would like to know where my tax dollars are and I'm concerned that things are just a little too confusing. All five commissioners voted for an audit. When will this audit be taking place? Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Strout.
My name is Amanda Strout and I'm here as a private citizen. Good evening. Good evening, county commissioners. I'm here to talk about ARPA funds. I recently reached out to county staff and commissioners to try and find out if there were any unallocated ARPA funds left. If so, how much and what were the plans for the funds? Ms. Nelson kindly informed to me that as of April 1st, the county commission had $26,497.03 in unallocated funds. As no one got back to me on plans for the remaining funds, I have a suggestion. Use most of the funds to replace the monies you cut from the Parks and Rec budget. Specifically, put back $10,000 for the fireworks and $10,000 for scholarships. This use of ARPA funds would be allowed under the Department of Treasury's very broad category of support public health response and build stronger communities through investments in housing and neighborhoods. I had just convinced the Ransum City Council to create a dedicated line item in our budget in the amount of $5,000 for the Jefferson County Parks and Rec fireworks, so they wouldn't have to do so much begging to afford to put on a highly popular county event. But with the $10,000 cut to the fireworks budget, we've gone backwards and they're back to the equivalent of bake sales and car washes to try and put on a show. As for the scholarship program, which allows disadvantaged children the chance to learn how to swim, attend camp, or become a ninja warrior, well, that goes without saying. Thank you for listening.
Next, you have David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong resident, taxpayer. Have y'all really listened to what these people have said? I know you probably get tired of seeing me and hearing me. But it's absolutely worthless to come before this group to take 20 minutes to write everything down and submit it. You don't read it. You don't listen. You don't take note. There's a lot more people taking note. And you're not listening. Mainly three. I did not give you the right to make decisions that affect everyone in this county. You're supposed to be managing what we have. Anything less has to go before the voters. You've made two major mistakes in decisions and people have already died from one, the ambulance authority, JCESA, and the other one, and take note, the solar arrays. They may not have killed anybody yet, but it's coming. All you gotta do is wait. There is no structure within the system to handle the type of toxic materials, equipment, and to prevent from killing someone because there's no shut-off. If you have sunlight and it catches on fire, everything's alive, including the ground. I had several fire companies ask me what to do. And I said, "Don't go." Best thing to do is don't go and call the county commissioners that approved all this and let them go fight it. This is unacceptable. And more people like that have already spoke. And I hope that my encouragement over the years have finally come to revision, that it is time that the community has taken over our county instead of our county commission taking over the people. It's real simple. There is an election coming. You made a mistake two years ago. You made a mistake two years ago. Don't make it again. There could have been a big difference here. It is so bad that I just bought my own ambulance last week in service to take care of myself. Y'all have a nice day.
Stroud, do we have anybody online? Okay, right. That concludes our comment. Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
He takes priority.
No problem. If you could state your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Sorry. Ada Hensley, Charlestown resident, newly Charlestown resident. So I've been slightly concerned about mostly ironically, I've received a survey about an aquatic center and that really jumped out at me and I'm asking why we want to build a big swimming pool, if I were to be honest. We're in West Virginia, there's one at Shepherd College, but then I started looking at the increase in taxes that are being proposed, levies. I watched the ambulance thing fall apart. I moved from Berkeley County back into Jefferson County to get away from some of this stuff and I kind of found myself back in it. However, so I started doing some digging on the finances and I started auditing the processes and policies that are on the site. That's my background, I do that. Theater system validation, one of my babies. And I just want to list a couple of things that I've seen so far and I have others, but again, three minutes is not enough. I was unable to see any forensic audits on the website at all. I see financial audits, but as we know, they're different. I understand we're getting a new financial director. I think given all the problems we've had, the fair thing to do to that new person is to do a forensic audit and give them a chance to start on a clean slate, right? Or you're going to get a lot of people making speculations that probably doesn't need to happen. That's just an opinion from someone who manages staff, okay? Also SOP 319, I can find stuff around user roles. I can't find any notice or anything in that SOP as to who owns the system. Who's the system administrator? Normally, it's IT. It doesn't say that in there. The system administrator, if you don't know what that is, is normally what they call the super user, the god of a system. They can change algorithms, they can change systems, but nobody else can. So whoever has that system administrator role, it's pretty critical to have that documented within your policies and procedures for data integrity purposes, traceability. I also couldn't find in there who the system owner is. I think based on the procedure, it's the clerk of the county, the IT director, and the finance director. That's very abnormal. Normally, the system owner is one person. That system owner works with the system administrator in order to maintain data integrity and traceability of the system. So having three people being able to create user roles and stuff is very concerning as someone who works in this field. In addition, I could not find any policy or process on periodic reviews of the audit trail. Your audit trail is what your forensic auditors will use in order to actually determine and make sure the money's going where they say that is, nothing accidentally happened with algorithms, right? A financial audit doesn't do that. The forensic audit will and it'll tell you what the system's doing. I didn't see any controls related to the access granted to consultants or contractors. That's very abnormal to give your access to consultants and contractors and in the procedure, it lets you give them anything, even up to the system administration role. That's very concerning, very odd. Government definitely does not do that at NIH. That is like a no-go. And I could not find the process or procedure for removing staff who are no longer employees of the county. There's nothing on disabling. So these are just some things I've started looking at. I'll be coming back more to try to help because, as she said, luckily, you guys have citizens that are not dumb hicks. We are actually educated. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to agenda item number one. Angie Banks, is she online? All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is Angie Banks and I would like your approval to hire part-time help out of the general fund. It is budget neutral.
Angie, do you have the names of the--
No, I haven't advertised. I'm asking your permission to advertise. I'm sorry. I didn't make that clear.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and this is budget neutral, correct?
Yes, it is.
I'm happy to support this. I don't know how we should structure the motion. I don't see a sample written up here. Should we say move to approve advertisement for part-time help for the county assessor's office?
I'll second, right? Sounds good enough to me. And I'll second that. Any discussion?
Because it's budget neutral, approve it.
Yes. All in favor?
Thank you.
About this, something I would just like to point out, we do need completed agenda requests. Sorry, you're right. I forget. We do need completed agenda requests before we prepare the agenda and have it out to us because that was, would have been easier if that was there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Angie. All right, next, we have agenda item number two, Tom Hanson, Sheriff.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I have three items. One of you, all three are quote-unquote budget neutral. One of them actually is, I'm going to you to apply again to the court security grant for x-ray machines for the two courts that weren't approved last time. If you didn't get the story about it, according to the sheriff that's on the panel, our three, all three x-ray machines were approved and they got an email while they were in panel saying that $200,000 was cut from their budget. So we only got one. We're in the process of buying that one, but I think it's ludicrous that our courts don't have x-ray machines to look into packages nowadays, especially with purses that have hiding places, any place in them for a weapon. So that's the first one I'm asking for.
I'll move to approve the application for the court security grant and authorize the sheriff to sign the associated documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero.
Second, we've lost several part-time bailiffs and I've identified two individuals who want to fill those positions. I'm seeking approval to hire Julie Wolford and Thomas Twig, both as part-time bailiffs, beginning on April 22nd, 2024, at a rate of $17 an hour. And this is again, within my budget.
I'll move to approve the part-time hire Julie Wolford and Thomas Twig, part-time bailiffs, beginning April 22nd, 2024, at a rate of 17 an hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero.
Finally, my predecessor hired two bailiffs authorized to work no more than 1,560 hours. To do so, the county has to pay retirement. One of the bailiffs authorized to work this greater number of hours was, has retired and I'm seeking permission to allow Kathleen O'Connor, who was currently a part-time bailiff, to work the 1,560 hours and receive the retirement benefits that were previously being paid to a bailiff that has since retired. As it was, this is already being paid for by, for another employee who was retired. It is no, again, it is budget neutral.
I move to approve that Kathleen O'Connor be allowed to work no more than 1,560 hours, which will entitle her to receive PERS retirement benefits paid by the county.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, commissioners. Have a good evening.
All right, next, we're gonna move on to agenda item number three, Sarah McGee with Mountain Heart Community Services.
Yes, I bring, we have to be very close to it. I bring two petitions to you. One is for Community Action Month. That would be the month of May and we partnered with Telemont in that and we just asked that you sign that proclamation. And the second proclamation is for Provider Appreciation Day, which would be May 10th if you sign that.
I was just gonna ask, do you mind reading these two just for the public's record? I know it was in the agenda, but--
Yes, yes. So for the proclamation for the provider appreciation, that is Mountain Heart Community Services of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day. Childcare has provided a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force of our economy. The pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of the West Virginia young children, families, and communities. Childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses, run and staff predominantly by women, continue to recover from the health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families. And West Virginia recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support for providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by issuing payment for enrollment versus attendance and offering grants and professional development opportunities. The future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences and provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to children's future. And that is, says that you would proclaim, sorry, May 10th as Provider Appreciation Day in Jefferson County and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. And then the second one, the Community Action Month proclamation, and that says, "Community action has made several essential contributions across the nation for 60 years, inspiring a spirit of hope, creating opportunities for millions of people to be a part of the American dream and improving communities. Community action remains committed to the nation that creates opportunities for all people to thrive, build strong resilient communities, and ensures a more equitable society. Community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of American counties. Community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing strong communities and stable homes. Community action strategies and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of individuals, families, and communities in city suburbs and rural areas change. Community action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, local, and private resources to achieve results for people and communities. Community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice that will be heard. Community action is recognizing 60 years of innovation impact and providing proven results for Americans." And this would proclaim May 2024 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Jefferson County, West Virginia, community action agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, no. Sit down. Sorry. I appreciate you reading both of those because I know that's a lot to get out.
It's okay.
And I know I'm not real familiar. Can you give example of services that are offered in Jefferson County? I always associate Telemont with Martinsburg. I don't know why, but that's--
It is in Martinsburg as well. But as far, I can't speak too much on Telemont and what they do. I know that I'm employed with Mountain Heart and that subsidized childcare, offering childcare for low-income families so that they can support themselves and their families and so that they can go to work and--
And that's a resource that's being used in Jefferson County?
Yes, yeah. We serve as Jefferson, Morgan, and Berkeley County.
And how do folks find out about you?
We try to do outreach events or, you know, just go to local businesses or we'll do, like a job fair is coming up, for instance. So we'll go to that. So I know, you know, a lot of people are coming in to look for jobs and then we'll say, hey, by the way, if you need somebody to watch your kids, it's a good opportunity.
Okay, all right. That sounds great.
Yep. Commissioner Tab, I believe the Telemont office is in Berkeley County. It provides a service for the--
Yeah, right.
Okay. Do you may have any further questions? I would like to move to authorize commission president to sign both proclamations as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move to agenda item number four, Jennifer Brockman, Planning Zone.
Good evening. Good evening. What I have before you is the planning commission initiated a text amendment to the subdivision regulations to add a requirement that a public hearing be held when a waiver application is being processed. Historically, they were being held and it was pointed out that the regulations didn't require that or maybe even permit it. So we stopped holding the public hearings and now we are doing a text amendment so that the public hearings will be formally in the regulations. So in your packet is the limited edition that's required in order to put that in there. The planning commission held a public hearing. I don't believe they're required to hold a public hearing, but they held a public hearing in order to make sure they were giving you a recommendation that they felt good about, which they have done. And now I am here to request that you schedule a public hearing, which is required by state law, in order for the subdivision regulations to be amended. It appears that a class one legal ad is required 30 days prior to the public hearing. So I think if you scheduled it today and we ran the ad, the next available spirit, you could hold it on June 6th, which is your first meeting in June. And then I think your second meeting in June maybe was rescheduled to June 27th because of West Virginia Day. So either June 6th would be a daytime meeting or June 27th, which would be an evening meeting.
I'll make the motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendment to Division 24.300 C and D of the Jefferson County subdivision regulations on June 6th or June 27th, 2024.
Time to be determined, I guess.
Well, yeah. It'll depend on if it's a daytime or evening meeting.
Yeah, okay. Just make sure. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure.
Yes, sorry. Go ahead. Okay, I was just gonna say, I appreciate this. I think that even if the planning commission aren't required to hold a public hearing, we should do better and we should always encourage public participation and it's very important. It's just very important. So I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you went first, so now all I have to say is I agree completely. This is an important step forward for transparency. Thank you for your work on this.
I think I need a date certain because if it's June 6th, I need to run the ad in next week's spirit.
If it's June 6th, like 11--
Like June--
11?
Oh, okay. A time. Yeah.
If it's June 26th, like 7?
Yeah.
So you have--
June 27th at 7:00. June 6th at 11:00.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So do you want to do June 6th at 11:00?
I mean, I think if we're having a public hearing, it should be when people can be available to come and comment. So I do believe it would be more beneficial in evening meeting.
Okay.
That's my recommendation or that's what I suggested.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to amend the motion to have it on June 27th, that's certainly fine by me, too. And then we could have it at a date cert--
7:00 PM.
Yes. I agree to the amendment and put the date as June 27th at 7:00 PM.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, here, none. All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. We're running slightly ahead of schedule. We don't do interviews before the lot of time, so we're gonna move to agenda item number six. Jennifer Myers, Director of Parks and Rec. Is she online? We are ahead of schedule, yes, ma'am. Okay.
That's hard to believe.
Yeah, man. What about Laura Kuhn? Does she come in here in person or is she online? Okay. Do you want to give us an overview or do you have the information to give us an overview about the AC units at Parks and Rec or should we just wait?
I think we've, the numbers have been adjusted at the blast rates.
Okay. All right. And then, and same way for, I'm sure as well, too. All right, well, how about we do this while we go to the county administrator reports and we'll get you done out of your early night. All right, well, how about we do this while we go to, to the county administrator report. So we'll get you done out of here early, like.
So first, Article 147. So I reported. I reported at the April 4th meeting that the Charlestown City Council had tasked John Nissel. With meeting with Todd Wilt and me about possible changes to 147 at the same meeting, the Christian asked, tasked me with engaging with our attorney on one. On Article 147 issues. I reached out to our attorney, which is Will, Will Rollerbaugh. And John Nissel and Todd Wilt, we have a meeting on the agenda and. I, I think already that we have some interesting topics to discuss on that. My next was solicitation of a, uh, human resource manager, which Nathan is coming later. So I would recommend, uh, reserving that because he has the EEOC. Review. And so my last in this pretty fast. Agenda is that we are doing an employee benefits fair. There's open enrollment in May and we haven't ever done, Bessie, and then. So any kind of benefits fair. So right now Parks and Rec will have a table about summer camps. Our insurance provider will be there to talk about open enrollment. We're looking at trying to have, um, someone from PERS there. The, uh, West Virginia Treasury will be there about 457. Plans and 529 plans, APU and Shepherd will be there. With their programs, Blue Ridge will be there. The school district will be there with their adult education plans. So, um, it will be at Sam Michaels as long as we can, uh, figure out a solution for the AC issue. And, um. Altogether, I think it's turning out to be a pretty great resource that employees have yet to have. And that's May 13th, 10 to 2, and we'll also send it out, um, to people who are interested in working for the county. So that they can learn about what benefits are available and what positions are.
All right, um, what we'll do at this time is we'll take a short break. And we will not start the interviews prior to 7:10 as it's on the agenda. If for some reason Jennifer or Laura come, uh, we are, just for the public notice, who's watching online, we are running ahead of schedule. If they come in before 7:10 and we can knock them out before we do interviews, uh, for the boards, we'll do that. So we're going to take a short break.
I, I just have one question on the board. Are we just waiting? Cause we interviewed most of them except what, one last time? So we're just waiting.
Which board?
For the CTOP.
I think it's, I think it was two.
Two that didn't.
As my understanding, I think they were online, they just couldn't get our view, something. So is that, is that right? Were they online, I think? Or no, they weren't. I, I don't know what, again, yeah, so two, two on CTOP and then we have, uh, the Parks and Rec. Do we have somebody? It's one for Parks.
We have an application. Are they here?
Any chance we can get Nathan over here a little earlier?
So I just got a text from him saying that, should he come over? But I think it'll take him a few minutes to wrap up and come over. And I also let, uh, Laura and, uh, Jennifer know that we're ready for them.
Okay. All right, well, um, who is, who's on, I'm scrolling. Who's our Parks and Rec applicant?
Randall Taylor.
Is he here by any chance? Or online? Okay, why don't we take a break and then we'll come back. I know we're running early, so we'll, we'll check. All right, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and, and get back into the meeting here. We're, we're going to jump around a little bit. We'll come back to interviews and then Jennifer Myers comes in before 7:10 and will take care of her item as well too. We're going to go ahead and jump to Laura Coon, Director of Fleet Facilities and Management.
Good evening. Um, I'm here to request the. Sure.
Thank you.
I'm here to request, uh, approval to submit, um, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Voucher Application. This program is administered through the Department of Energy. With the aim of assisting local governments in implementing strategies to reduce energy use and improve energy efficiency. Um, under the EECBG program, our county has been allocated $76,900 to invest in energy saving measures. Um, one aspect of this program is the option for local governments to opt for equipment rebate, rebate vouchers or technical assistant vouchers in place of, um, traditional grants. So this is designed with flexibility to simplify the process that you're not going through the full grant process that they usually do with these kinds of grants. It's an online submission. So the equipment rebate vouchers are used for the purchase and installation of energy related equipment. One of the allowable options for use of the equipment rebate is, uh, for retrofit technology that include weatherization materials. So I'm proposing we utilize these funds for the purchase and installation of new energy efficient windows in various county facilities. This upgrade will not only address the pressing need to replace outdated and inefficient, uh, windows. But it will also contribute to long term energy cost savings. Our priority areas for window replacements include the Mason Building and Public Services Center. Where I think. They would benefit the most from the new windows. The equipment rebate vouchers provided by the EECBG program. It's a lot of words or letters. Will cover the costs associated with procuring and installate, installing energy related equipment. Such as the windows. This event. This investment will align perfectly with their project, uh, program objectives. So that we can save money on our energy consumption. So I'm seeking your approval to submit this. Like I said, it's an online, um, submission. So I don't have like a traditional grant packet. Like I would usually have everything's online. I have it ready to go. Pending your approval and then all I have to do is hit the submit button. But it's, they made it like this. So it would be simpler for, uh, local governments to go through the process.
Director Coon, you mentioned simplicity. Is there a cost associated with the county applying for this grant?
No, there's no, um, matching cost or anything. We're just allocate the 76.9.
Okay. With that in mind, I move to approve the submission of the EECBG Program Voucher Application. For an Energy Efficiency Improvement Project to replace windows in various county buildings.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll have, I'll make a couple comments. Sure. Specialists just waiting, right? But this is about saving taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
County, uh, the county pays its utility bills. We've always paid our utility bills. Where was going to pay our utility bills.
Correct.
When the bills go up, it costs more for the taxpayer. This is a way for those bills to go down over time.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for looking into this. I humbly suggest you also take a look at potentially sealing up some ductwork. That can be a, a good way to save some money. It's typically covered by energy efficiency improvements within buildings. Something to look at, but of course I defer to your expertise and windows are a great way to do so.
Yeah.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. Well, and having worked in the Public Services Center. One portion of it, I, I know the windows, it's badly needed improvement. Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right. We are still running slightly ahead of schedule, um, about four whole minutes. Can we see if there's anybody online, rather than Randall Taylor? I think it, we're looking for John Knott or Mr. Cubic.
We need to re-interview Ms. Parker for CTOP. I mean, she's here.
And if y'all want to. Doesn't matter. Who's that? Okay. He has to answer what?
He has to enter the PIN.
So, Mr., so, so Mr. Cubic, you, if you're on, you're online, I think you can hear us, but you have to enter your PIN so you can speak. Todd is online too.
And we entered, we interviewed him last time, but I mean.
Yes. Is John not online? All right, um, and Pete's, Mr. Cubic, I'm sorry.
We have Heidi here.
Yes, ma'am. Do y'all want to, do y'all want to do the interviews again? Or, I mean, I mean, it's up to you. It was two weeks ago. Uh, and then Mr. Will, Mrs. Parker already interviewed you. I mean, it's up to y'all if y'all want to do that again.
Since she's here, we should probably just. Have her come up.
Sure, if you want to come up, we'll start.
See the harms since she's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and, um, and, and do it again, um, as far as all the interviews. That's the pleasure of the group. So hopefully I'll give time for the folks who are online to figure out how to unmute. All right.
Okay.
Can you tell us why you would like to be a member of the CTOP Board?
Well, I'm currently filling the vacancy until, uh, someone is, is selected again for the next. Term. So why do I want to continue in that? Cause I feel like I provide a unique voice. We have a mayor, we have city employees and we have Charlestown Utility Board. Employees and I'm really the only. Applicant that brings a rate payer perspective. I know I can be outvoted at every meeting, but I hope that we're right, the hope that my perspective. Will expand on, um, maybe and help the decision making for the impact on the rate pairs, especially as we're looking as growth is happening in our county. Want to make sure that. The people moving in, um, have the services they need, but also that be. A part of their capacity improvement fee so that it doesn't fall onto our rates. So I'm really hoping to continue, um, in following the law, uh, West Virginia 24 dash two dash two B about future. Future pain for the future. Also, I'm proud of my record of voting for rate consolidation. And also right now I'm trying to get capacity improvement fees looked at because, uh, a year ahead of schedule because. Already we have two projects in motion that have cost more than we anticipated. And with more on the, the more coming, I feel like we need to. Move, move ahead and, and do that a little bit earlier and make sure that we're collecting enough so that doesn't fall on our rate pairs. Well, the, and the rest of the board members haven't, um, quite thought my way yet, but I really, you know, to be responsible in the growth, I think we definitely need to look at it once more.
Agreed.
And frankly, I think I'm the only one that actually has proven that I live in the boundaries. This is copying my bill that I sent, uh, for the last meeting and I participated in online traveling back from a wedding. So. If anybody cares about this, it's me and.
Well, Ms. Parker, thank you so much for everything that you've done, I know you, you've been a hard, hard worker over there, and I appreciate that very much. I do want to say, I noticed that you do qualify on all three of these requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that proof, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I serve on the CTUB as the liaison, obviously I'm not a voting member, but my concerns are similar. Is the ratepayers in the county, and ratepayers in general, and making sure we're taking care of them and not, or not overburdening them with unnecessary fees and expansion? If we don't, we don't need to do that, so I appreciate the voice that you bring to the CTUB Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask you about expansion. Let's say hypothetically, there's a major commercial development and it brings in millions of dollars of revenue, that's what I mean by major, it's huge, right? And we need to invest in infrastructure, so to supply utilities, water, electricity. How does that affect ratepayers? And I know, just paint with a broad brush here, because it's.
Okay.
How does that affect ratepayers, is that a good thing, is it a bad thing?
So there is Title 150, which kinda outlines what happens. For example, if a business is a certain distance away from where treatment is, they're responsible for that transmission line expenses. And then as people add on, then they get back their little part of the expense. And so it's a way, and it's, it's within a timeframe typically, so it's a way of providing a service, but also allowing the people that are investing in their business to make it happen. And then as people connect, then they get their, their money back in a way. So there, there, this isn't the first time anybody's thought, well, I'm gonna put my bus, business way out in the middle of the country, okay? So they have rules for it, I would like to follow those rules. And that's Title 150.
Would you say it's good, bad, neutral? If you follow the rules, it's a good thing, if you follow the rules, it's a neutral thing, you're just following the rules and that's.
I am.
What's your view?
I don't know if this matters, but I am pro-business, I am Republican, but it also, but I also see where people have used public funds and utility funds for their personal business, and I, I am against that. Because if, who's making the money? They should be the one having the risk, not the ratepayers. But there is, there is a formula to follow.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next wheel is, Mr. Will able to unmute?
I believe I am.
There we go, we can hear you.
Excellent.
Good. And we're echoing right now. There we go. Could you tell us why you would like to serve on CTUB?
So, thank you. As I highlighted last meeting, I've recently moved into what I believe is an eligible area, served by former PSD assets. And having been close to the CTUB PSD ransom consolidation, I recognize that there are a limited pool of candidates that are available to fill this position, the way some believe, you know, the way 147 of the Charlestown City Ordinance is currently constructed. So knowing that, I believe I qualified in that regard, recently come back, knowing that the ordinance called for three names to be submitted, I wanted to ensure there were a pool of quality candidates. There were questions during the last meeting about my employment, you know. As I point out, as you can see in my resume, I am city manager of Ranson. May in some ways appear to create a conflict, but there have been a number of prior members that, you know, were qualified in several areas or served the board, but had qualifications from different areas. The most recent that I can recall was Mr. John Barkley, who was the city manager of Charlestown, resident of Ranson, and I believe served by former PSD assets. So it's certainly not unheard of. And have, you know, wear multiple hats. I also believe that, you know, my experience in local government gives me a firm understanding of how these boards and commissions are supposed to operate. And, you know, always, I think I've proven in my career thus far, you know, to try to, you know, hold the line on what the law does say and move things forward as written. CTUB now has the unique challenge of competing with a corporate entity, now that the PSC has, you know, recently allowed American Water into the equation. And I think ensuring that we have a well-managed utility is going to be paramount to ensuring we continue to deliver an appropriate level of service and a quality price to the ratepayers.
Thank you, does anybody else have any questions?
I do. Hi, Mr. Will, this is Jennifer Kraus. So if the mayor of Ranson is on the CTUB Board, how is it that you being on the CTUB Board would not be a conflict of interest?
I mean, there's, there's no exclusion that I'm aware of in the code as it's currently written. I don't answer directly to the mayor, I answer to the city council of Ranson and the performance of my job. But, you know, I'm not aware of any job exclusion that's currently allocated in the ordinance as it's written. There are very few exclusions for jobs in, in most boards and commissions across local government. I know there are exclusions for building commissions. I think at times you'll find exclusions for civil service commissions. But as I read the ordinance, I don't see an exclusion there. I think, given the right mindset, we all wear multiple hats in these roles, we have a small community, and I think I am quite capable of, you know, knowing what role I'm serving and making those decisions.
Thank you. You want to point out is that it does say here that the county commission shall, shall have the right to nominate not more than three individuals. It does not say that we must put all three individuals. Yeah, I do want to make that, make that correction for the public. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I had a question, sure, there. Mr. Will, this is a hypothetical question, let's say there's a large commercial enterprise, wants to go to the county. When I say large, I mean roughly, you know, millions of dollars in revenue, that's what I mean in terms of scale. How would this affect, oh, and in order to run this business or commercial enterprise, you would need to increase water flow and electricity flow and upgrade infrastructure to serve the new commercial development. How would that affect ratepayers? And if you could explain a little bit, and then do you have any thoughts on whether this is a good thing, a bad thing, neutral? How do you, how do you think about it?
Well, I think, I think we've recently lived that experience in Jefferson County and in Ranson. You know, I think with your hypothetical, there are a number of ways that that could play out, and, and some of them, you know, depend on what the precise requirements of the business are. In some cases, I could see it being a good thing, right? Because it, it extends, you know, the service area of the utility and, you know, provides opportunities for connections for things that are in between, you know, the, the, the business and and the current location of the utility. If it would happen to prompt, you know, the need for upgrades to the, the filtration plant. You know, I think those are beneficial, right? We live in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, the requirements for the discharge.
We lost you, Todd. We have a bad connection, it sounds like. Can you hear us, Todd? All right. Speaking of infrastructure, we could use some better. Yeah, we need some broadband and everything, for sure. All right, well, we'll move on to Mr. Cubic right now. Can we call, you have a number, something number? I can grab this money back here. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say point of order, we didn't call any of the other applicants.
Right.
Well, he's online and can't call in, I mean.
I mean, I'm just saying, it's either be present or find a way to get on that, we didn't call any of the other applicants.
Right. We're not extending that courtesy to everybody.
Well, who else do we need to extend the courtesy to?
I don't know.
I think if we can connect with Mr. Cubic. For questions and then make our discussion.
So I did make it back, I don't know what happened to my internet, sorry.
All right, so I'm not exactly sure where we left off.
I think he was answering the hypothetical.
Yeah. I'm not sure, you were answering the hypothetical, I'm not exactly sure where that dropped. There you go.
Thank you.
There you go. You were talking about the service area between site upgrades and filtration, or something close to that, thank you. So you wanna take off from there, Todd? Okay, do we lose you again?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
No.
Okay, all right.
I did have another question for him, if he does come back.
All right. So, does any, I mean, if Mr. Cubic's online, he can't connect, we can start. He's, okay. Okay. So Mr. Cubic, if you can hear us, if you can unmute yourself, we will, we will be able to hear you.
While he's doing that, I just, before the last meeting, I had emailed Kristen Stolliper, who's the the utility general manager for CTUB, asking for confirmation of eligibility of all applicants and giving them the addresses. And her response, April 4th, was Eddie, I have confirmed all applications below, applicants below are customers of the former JC PSD system. With regard to Pete Cubic, he has various accounts in our system, with his construction business account being one on the former JC PSD. Each of the customers noted below are listed in our billing system as residential or commercial customers in the PSD former JC PSD system.
I don't think he's a resident of Jefferson County.
He's not a resident.
He's verified that with Commissioner Kraus.
Yes, he has.
Well, he sent, I sent him an email asking, and he told me twice he was a resident of Jefferson County. But he has a model home.
Why don't we try to get him online and ask him that?
Yeah, maybe we should do that.
Is, is he, can he unmute yet?
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
There we go, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Can you first tell us why you wanna be on the CTUB Board, sir?
Is this Cubic?
Well, let me, let me, let me please jump in there and answer the, the question that was just posed. I'm currently a resident of Jefferson County. I have a residence in Locust Hill. I'm a current Jefferson County registered voter. I'm also a customer of CTUB, both for my residence and for my business in Carneville. The reason I put my name back into the hat for a position at CTUB was my previous tenure from 2002 to 2022, a span over 20 years. I was in the capacity as a civil engineer on the board and also concerned about development and/or future expansion of water and sewer. So I used that experience, and as far as I'm concerned, I think I performed the duties in my previous position until my term expired in '22.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do. Hi, Mr. Cubic, this is Commissioner Kraus.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, you said you live in Jefferson County?
That's correct.
When did you move back to Jefferson County?
I had sold a property at the tail end of '21 in Jefferson County. My term was up in January or February of '22. In the tail end of '21, I purchased the home at Locust Hill. So it was just before Christmas on '22 that I owned another property in Jefferson County. I'm in the construction business and I have a model home that's located up in Berkeley County. That's on a subdivision that we are helping an investor develop. But my principal residence, my mailing address, my, where I stay is in Jefferson County.
Why was it on October 5th you told me you live in Berkeley County?
On October 5th of when, ma'am?
2023, just this past October, you told me you live in Berkeley.
Well, like I had indicated before, I have a model home, it's up in Berkeley County. Occasionally I might go up there, but my residence is here in Jefferson County, that's where my kids reside. And my business is here in Jefferson County as well.
Well, it's not the business that's applying, it's you. And it, one of the requirements is that you must reside in Jefferson. And you told me on October 5th of 2023 that you live in Berkeley County now. So.
Well, all I could tell you is, if I, if I told you that, it may have been in the capacity that I was staying up at this model home for the evening, but my residency is in Jefferson County, my tax bills are Jefferson County. And that's why I put my name back in the hat for a CTUB position. I'm also a registered voter in Jefferson County. And in the upcoming election in November, I will be voting in Jefferson County, so I don't know what else to tell you, ma'am.
That's interesting, I wonder, I just can't figure out why you would have told me that you live in Berkeley. You know, staying in Berkeley sometimes is not living in, in Berkeley, and you said, I live in Berkeley County now.
Does he mail, sir?
Well.
Well, I wasn't.
Okay. Do you have any other specific questions about my qualifications, ma'am?
The requirement, number one, is that you must be a resident of Jefferson County, West Virginian. And as of right now, I don't have confidence that you do, because you told me yourself that you live in Berkeley in October. So thank.
Well, I'm, I'm answering your question right now, ma'am, that I am a Jefferson County resident. You can either accept it or not accept it, but that's what I'm telling you right now. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about specifically?
Thank you very much, I do not accept it, because you told me in your own words in October that you live in Berkeley County now, thank you very much. I have no more questions.
Does any other question?
Yes, I do. So, Mr. Cubic, do you have existing construction projects in Jefferson County? Or have you applied for permits for other construction projects in Jefferson County?
Yes, ma'am, we, my company currently has several projects actively proceeding in Jefferson County. A couple of single-family homes, and we're just getting ready to help with a building expansion over in the Burr Industrial Park.
Okay, and would those construction projects be tied into Charlestown Utility?
No, both, well, the commercial project, yes, will be tied into American Water in the Burr Industrial Park, but then CTUB for the sewer, the other two residents are on well and septic.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
You're welcome.
Sir, Mr. Cubic or Kubik, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Cubic, sir.
Mr. Cubic.
Mr. Cubic, I'm asking a hypothetical question of all the candidates. Let's say there's a large commercial development in Jefferson County or proposed commercial development. And to indicate scale, when I say large, I mean millions of dollars in revenue. If that were to come into the county and we needed to upgrade our infrastructure to service, to properly service that proposed development, and that would be water, electricity, other utilities. How would that affect ratepayers and what are your views? Is this a good thing, a bad thing, neutral? Please explain.
Well, the first and foremost, if a potential, whether it be commercial or residential user comes online, they would have to submit an application at CTUB. And if it's a commercial project, they would have to indicate what kind of water service or sewer service they may be requiring. If the, where the point of contact into the system, if the infrastructure is such that he can't handle it, then normally a mainline extension agreement between that subdivision or that developer and CTUB exists. So that, one, is they have to pay for the improvements that are required for their necessary service. So there's a safeguard there for the utility that they're not 100% bearing all the costs. On the residential side, for example, there's currently adequate capacity in the plant. There's two plants right now currently in the system. So a big commercial user, first of all, when the application came through, it would have to be approved. It would have to be vetted. If we could handle the capacity, if we could, then we'll issue a letter of availability and then work through the mainline extension agreements, et cetera. As for the ratepayers, a commercial user is going to pay, you know, rates as well for their service or for their sewerability or water, depending on if they need one or the other or both. And that's usually how it plays out when you define who is actively really just kicking the tires or if they're seriously going to hang their hat in Jefferson County for business.
Thanks, Mr. Cubic. And I asked her a follow-up question to other candidates, so I'll ask you just a follow-up. Do you have any thoughts on whether this is a good thing, a bad thing, neutral? What's your opinion?
Well, you know, in the last, in the previous 20 years on the utility board, everything in the United States in the last couple of years has seen a shift. Almost everybody is more concerned about water-saving devices, whether they be toilets or showerheads, et cetera. So what's happened, this has put a, this has put a scare a little bit into the existing utility because the actual consumption or use of water in a lot of places has decreased due to this energy efficiency. So what happens is it stores the utility on its ability to pay its bills and expand because it's limited on the revenue stream that it's pulling in. So that's the fine line right now, managing, you don't want to over-serve an area and of course, underserving's not good as well. So you have to find the happy medium between the two. So I, as always, when developers or individuals submit for water and sewer capability, they have to be vetted and they have to be considered at face value for what they're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any further questions? All right, here none. Thank you, Mr. Cubic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we ever confirm whether John Naught is online, Schreider? Okay, all right. So what we'll do, we'll open it up for, now, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard it earlier. We, and we have to send up to three names, correct?
Right, it says not more than three.
So it could be one, two, or three?
Right.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think there were some questions raised about residency. I, do we, if we don't have a deadline, I wouldn't mind taking some extra time to figure out or maybe figure out the way we're verify residency as requested by one of the commissioners. And I would note, Mr. Wilt wasn't able to fully answer a question due to a connection problem. I personally have experienced that. It's quite frustrating. Maybe you could be provided an opportunity to respond in writing if he so chooses. I don't think we've interviewed Mr. Naught unless we're under some deadline. I understand that, I think CTUB is a little bit frustrated that it's taking long, but I do think these questions are legitimate questions that deserve an answer.
Do you know the deadline constraints? Do you want to, you talked about that a little bit?
CTUB, this position expired in, at the end of the year. The last, Jackie Milliron resigned from her position when she left the PSD in the middle of the summer. Is that right? So.
September, August of '22.
Of '22. So it took quite a while to fill that seat because we never submitted a person or people to fill that position for confirmation for the city council. They are not happy that we have not submitted anyone to them since the position was open beginning in January. So we are now four months in. They're not very happy. And I think what you should know is, under Section 147, they don't have to accept who you select. And number two, they can select someone in our absence should we not send anyone along.
Well, with that said, I'd like to nominate Ms. Heidi Parker to reappointment on the Charleston Utility Board.
A second.
All right, we're just, we're just opening the floor for nominations. Sounds like we're going to bid for it. I'll nominate Mr. Cubic.
I have a question about his residency. And it does, I do see here his, the tax bills show up in his name up to 2022, but not in his name in 2023. So I think that, you know, it's, it's pretty clear he does not live in Jefferson County. And I'm getting a little frustrated with being handed a pile of poop. And we have a perfectly good candidate right here who's been serving, who wants to, for some reason, continue to serve. And I think that we should go ahead and let her continue that.
Well, we're gonna, what we're doing is open up the floor for nominations and then we will, we will proceed to vote then. Yep, so we have Ms. Parker, who's been nominated, Mr. Cubic has been nominated.
Second, I feel like I should make a comment on a second, which is odd, but you know.
It's just for nominations and then we'll vote.
Fair enough.
Okay, and then I'll nominate Todd Wilt as well, too.
Second.
All right, all right, so we'll ask a question.
Yeah.
Do we nominate everybody who was interviewed? Yes, okay, yes.
So we don't need to put forward three names. We have one person right here who meets all three of the requirements, who also has experience in this position. Pete Cubic does not meet the residency requirement. And Todd Wilt, if I'm not mistaken, as a resident of Glen Haven, he is a former water-only customer of the Public Service District. And that disqualifies him as well. So there are two right there that are disqualified.
Well, and I, I have concerns about Mr. Cubic and his contracts or construction projects in the county and unduly influencing things that happen on the CTUB that benefit his business.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
All right. We'll take a vote for each of the three things.
How, how can you vote on two people who have, well, obvious conflicts and questions about residency? I'm telling you, the tax records do not show his name on that property in 2023. He told me in 2023 that he lives in Berkeley County.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we will, well, we will all proceed to vote. We all have a one-fifth vote and then we'll proceed.
How is this a legitimate vote?
If.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. At what point will we be debating? It sounds like we're in debate. I would like to make comments as well. Is now the time to make comments? Is it later?
Well, I think before people start voting.
I'm raising a point of order. When, when, when do all the commissioners have an opportunity to comment?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I did raise the question. If we could hold off on this to verify the residence questions, there was a motion made regardless, and if that's the way we're going to proceed, that's fine. I understand one commissioner has questions about the residency. My understanding is that the staff has verified the residency. We heard something read into the record about that. So we have the information in front of us.
Who's the staff that verified the residency? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you still talking. I apologize.
I did pause, you're right.
I'm sorry.
So I'll continue on, with respect to Mr. Wilt. There were questions raised at the last meeting. There's questions raised at this meeting about a conflict of interest because he's a sitting government official. I don't have those concerns. I can see where that's coming from. I don't think anybody who has that view is wrong. But I take a look at it as having experience that's relevant to the questions that would be posed to CTUB. I think all three of the people who have been, oh, and let me compliment Ms. Parker, who's in the audience. All three of the people are, all candidates are highly qualified, seem to be extremely diligent and informed about the issues. I raised a hypothetical question and I thought all three gave very competent, informed answers. So for that reason, I'd like to support all three.
Well, I'm sorry, my question was, which member of the staff confirmed the residency? I think it was Mr. Stolliper's wife who confirmed the residency.
She said, she's the director of CTUB.
That they were CTUB because you have to be a ratepayer. So I confirmed that they were the ratepayers, appropriate ratepayers. And then I asked Mr. Cubic if he was resident. Sent me an email in response because I wanted to make sure that we weren't speaking out of turn because you had said he was. So I have one and you have another, and so it's up to you guys.
From him that he is not. And then the tax records indicate that he is not as well.
So at, at least as kind of a side step, I would love to be able to confirm these things for you in a way that's appropriate for you before these meetings. In other municipalities and other counties, they look at the voter rolls. We could pull those voter rolls and have these qualified before a meeting.
Why didn't you do that before now, then? We, we had this in front of us at the last meeting.
And that's why, I, I mean, we don't have a process. So all that I can say is, are you a resident? He emailed back saying, I am a resident of Jefferson County. That's the only qualification that I have because we have no other typical.
This is sewer customer, I'm sorry, excuse me. But it's a sewer customer, too. Number two and three qualification is a sewer-only sewer customer. Glen Haven is a water-only customer.
And. And so because I'm not, we don't have access to those records, those billing records, I reached out to the, to CTUB and said, here are the addresses. Please confirm that these are ratepayers.
I think that what Ms. Milliron is saying is that based on the address that Mr. Wilt gives us, he doesn't live in a district that is a sewer customer. Am I correct? Did I say that correctly? Okay, yes. So that is, that is a disqualifying problem.
Mr. President, if I may make a suggestion. You know, this, this request is to nominate no more than three. We can nominate one, two, or three, and you know, that's totally up to us. I would go down each name that's been nominated. And if you get three votes, you can be nominated.
I, I agree with you.
Works for me.
Yep, all right, with a show of hands, all in favor of forwarding Heidi Parker's name to suit to the Charleston City Council, raise your hand to forward her name. All right, five. All right, for show of hands to forward Mr. Wilt's name to Charleston City Council, please raise your hand. Two. Or raise, please raise your hands to forward Mr. Cubic's name to the city council. Two, all right, and we're going to send one name down. It's going to be Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to Randall Taylor. I see, is he online? No? All right, all right. I guess we'll just maybe wait and see if he comes to that meeting.
The next meeting.
Yep, maybe he comes to the next meeting.
He's got a brilliant resume. He sounds like he'd be a lot of fun.
All right, we're going to move back to Agenda Number Six, Jennifer Myers.
Need to call in Laura for assistance.
All right.
Thank you, guys, for your time this evening. Um, we came into an unexpected situation at the community center. Last week, we turned on the air conditioning because it was 70, you know, nine degrees outside, and it did not work. So we currently have two units that are, that are not working for the gymnasium. So neither, neither HVAC unit at the gym is cooling. So we currently have no, no AC. So I'm here before you tonight to see if we can move forward with getting those units replaced. We, the county commission approved, I believe, this fiscal year for a $40,000 earmark or an allocation that would go toward the replacement of the HVAC systems at the community center. And the Parks and Rec Board was going to match that as well to have those units replaced. We had not, did not take into consideration, we believe they were hit by lightning for the week that we had those, the storms that it came through. We did, we didn't realize we'd have to replace them so quickly. So that is where we are. We, we did put this out to bid in December. And we did receive one bid. The estimate's about $110,000 to replace both units at the rec center. So that is what we are looking at currently. And in the meantime, we are also trying to figure out solutions to get through the first few weeks of summer, hopefully, not longer than that. But we're told it's about a 15-week.
Oh, wait, waiting.
15-week wait time to get the unit. So we're already looking at the end of June before we're going to have the units in place.
And it's already hot.
And our summer camps are already full of children at this point. So we are working with Laura to figure out other solutions, although they will be temporary, to try to have air conditioning and the facility for the summer months and/or looking at potentially moving programs to other facilities in the county if we, if we have to do that. So, and we haven't filed, we haven't filed a insurance claim. We are waiting to see what they will, they will likely not pay for the full replacement. There may be some, some monies that would help, you know, fix the units. But it is understanding, Randy came out and looked at the units from the county and it's RNS being that they, they need to be replaced.
That was my question, was insurance. Okay. Well, how, if, if insurance helps, how much will they cover? Do we have any idea?
We don't know. They have to come look at them. We have started the claim process, but because we're looking at a 15-week wait already, we are, we are considering this an emergency because we cannot run summer programming with no air conditioning. So we're trying to move, move forward and they are aware that we need to get them replaced quickly.
Yeah, so, so you have in, in the agenda, you requesting $60,000, but you're saying it's $110,000?
So, so what we are, when we put the request in, we weren't sure about the monies that were previously allocated. My understanding is that there is a $40,000 allocation currently. So what we would be asking, what my, what my board voted on last night is they're asking the county commission if they would consider paying half of the total, which the, the bid price we have is $109,950. So we would be asking the county commission to, you know, add the additional, if you have 40 allocated, if you can add another $15,000 to that, that would pay half. So the county commission would pay $55,000 and we would pay $55,000 to have the units replaced.
So we need to know what's in our capital outline. Does Bessie happen to know this number?
Capital outline, okay, all right. I'll, I'll move a motion to, to spend, to approve $55,000 for the HVAC replacement for Parks and Rec to be, to be taken out of capital outline.
I have a question, though. If the insurance does cover it and whatever portion they cover, will the Parks and Rec split the difference with the county? You know, that's happening with the person they provide. Some critical depreciation and all that.
You want to cover up to 55, half of the replacements, up to 55,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I also have questions. I was waiting for a second.
I'm going to second the motion, yes.
All right, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you. Should the motion be for 55 or for 15, given the 40 that's already been outlined?
Because.
Right, that was my question, too, is if we already allocated.
Right, that was my question too, is if we already allocated 40, is that for fiscal year '25? Or is that in, I think it's '24.
Yeah, this is, this would be for '24, then we would have to make a budget, budget adjustment in '25, budget revision in '25. Or 20, for FY '24, '25, correct?
No, 15 and 40 is 55.
Yes.
That's what we want to do, right?
I know that we wanted 55 overall.
Yeah.
Sorry if this is too legalistic. Maybe you can help me out here. But to restructure the motion such that it's 15 in this motion, or does it need to be 55? Or I don't know the right answer to that.
It's, you're asking for an initial 15 because we have 40 allocated. So I think that's the additional 15 out of capital alleys.
But we can't.
But we still have to approve the spending of the 40,000 and the additional funding of 15,000. That's the restated motion. Okay.
Yes.
And so if insurance covers 100,000, are we covering the remaining 10,000 or are we covering half of the remaining 10,000?
Insurance is going to cover that much, but.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right, I'll, I'll remove my motion from the floor. All right. How about this, we, I'll move, I'll move a motion to cover half of the, the cost of the HVAC unit. That will cover, I think that will take care of, if there's a reimbursement, right? Reimbursement will be split, I guess, 50/50. And the funds will be up, up to 55,000 with 40,000 coming out of, it's already there with an additional $15,000 that'll cover this, this expenditure. From capital outlet.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Post motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Do you want me to bring up the temporary?
Yeah.
So, so also this says 15 weeks, but in my experience, these things are taking longer. So I was working with Jennifer to try to come up with some temporary measures because we're running into summer months and it, she's not going to be able to have programs in that gym. So I did check with one of our HVAC company vendors that we use to get a quote on a rental. I knew it was going to be high, but it was sticker shock. So for the first month with the install labor and all that and the rent, $55,000 for one month and $15,000 for every month afterwards. So my HVAC tech, really good at thinking outside the box, had an idea that we bring in three five ton units to put outside the gym. Bring in the, we'll have to bring in an electrician to run those units, to hook up those units and do some, all the labor can be done in-house by my staff. Those five ton units, we use them all the time. We had to replace those units all the time. So once she's done with them, they can be reused. I have one that can probably, I could have used for it now, but we're waiting. So if we spend 5,000 for each unit, so it's $15,000 for the three units, plus I'm estimating another five to 10,000 for the electrical hookup and any other miscellaneous material. So about 25,000 for to get a temporary measure in there for right now, for, through the summer so that she can run her programs. But she's either going to have to cancel or pay rent to someone to run these programs. So if we could move ahead with that, like I said, those units we can reuse. So it's not money we're throwing away. We always have units that we need to replace within all our county buildings and we use that size all the time. So I think if we could allocate another 20 to 25,000 to get her through the summer months, that would be very beneficial to their programs.
I, I think that has to be another agenda item or agenda request because this only says the 60, up to the 60,000. And I understand the sense of urgency on that, but it's not on here for us to consider that or to look into where those funds would come from.
So it just sounds like a reasonable.
Yeah, no.
Stopgap. So we just need, get it on the agenda the right way.
Yeah.
Have our budget analysts.
Yes.
Say, where's the money?
Yeah, and certainly I would support that. I think, I think Commissioner Jackson's right. It probably just needs to be reworded on the agenda. So we're, we're compliance with open meetings. So we'll do that in two weeks.
All right.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
All right, and then, and what's the turnaround? Those, you get those pretty quick.
We can get those quickly. Yeah.
All right, good deal. All right, thank you.
Hope for cool weather for the next few weeks.
We do. Thank you guys.
All right, we're going to move on to, everything else is Nathan. So we have HR manager, some questions for you and then anything on your agenda eight.
So we can cover the HR position first, which is, I'm suggesting that we reconstitute position 40104, which is currently the deputy county administrator position and make it a human resource manager position, which moves it to a grade five or six, depending on the educational level. And I have attached the human resource manager job. And then also the deputy county administrator job that we had solicited for before. The reason we're interested in doing this is because we weren't able to find a candidate with sufficient human resource experience. And you'll see the essential functions of the previous position are HR management, organizational training and development. And then the other two positions were, the other two essential functions of the position were financial management, budgeting and accounting and financial analysis, which is actually conducted by Bessie now, and then community relations, which is conducted by Jess. And so then I included the breakdown of the grades. So you can see where it landed in the previous grade, which is grade eight, and now moving it to a five or six. And then on the final page, you'll see how those four essential features of the job would then be reconstituted. So position 40104 would now be an HR management position, which would be the reconstituted human resource manager. When this happens, there may be an issue with what would, what would you do if the county administrator were sick or on vacation? Who would fill in? So I reached out to all of the directors and staff in Hunter House and said, if asked, would you serve? And there is additional compensation because of the difference in the grade positions. And all of them said yes, with the caveat that they are a little nervous about how you would treat them. So please be nice if you decide to move forward with this position. There was a concern that there would be an EEOC concern from Ms. Jackson. So I shared all of this information with Nathan and Nathan has his review.
I mean, I don't really see any issue there. You're, you're only basically either adding or getting some employee to take on some additional duties, which is, is a common issue. And as far as the HR, I, I just don't really see that it's going to be a problem as far as any job description. The only thing, of course, and obviously, but maybe needs to be said, would just be to hire someone, you would need to, of course, follow all the guidelines of, you know, not discriminating against them because of some prohibitive factor or something like that.
Okay, if, if I may, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So we are eliminating the deputy county administrator position and replacing with an HR manager. It's the same job number. Okay. So, and I, I thank you for doing this because I think, I like to look at pictures and see. So we're reducing the duties of the county deputy county administrator in half. So there were four major responsibilities and just for the public, I know this was in the packet. So there were four major responsibilities for the deputy county administrator, which was HR management, organization, training and development, finance management and community relations. And so the two that's being suggested to move to HR manager, the two HR manager is HR management and training and development. So where the deputy county administrator's salary was $76,361, at a grade five for an HR manager would make it 47,290. So it's a savings of $29,071. And at a grade six would be $54,766, which is a savings of $21,595. Now, I did go through the HR management responsibilities of the deputy county administrator, which says they administer the HR functions for a department, provides advice, interpretations and guidance and conducts research and analysis on HR management matters, including particularly challenging or very highly sensitive matters, supervises and manages work in areas including recruiting, compensation analysis, position control, which I'm not sure what position control is, but new employee orientation, administration of awards, programs and ceremonies, counsels employees and conducts investigations of employee grievances, oversees processing of HR transactional paperwork, such as requests for personnel actions, and accomplishes daily HR management work. So it's administrative acts, aspects of HR, not necessarily the financial aspects of HR. Confirms training of staff and develops documentation and compliance standards. Tyler Systems updates for all personnel changes based on Jefferson County Commission approvals, salary and benefits projections for budget process. Assist in the coordination of the annual enrollment benefits process as the liaison for insurance broker for Jefferson County Benefits, EEOC, EOP, health census submissions. And then as far as the training and development, and again, this is a deputy administrator positions as listed. Develops and administers training programs, develops and tests training modules and oversees training or, or coordinates with other units, government agencies and contractors to develop, implement and conduct training, assessment, department training needs, plans and develops, provides training strategies for the departments, proposes training and development programs and objectives, develop and monitor spending against the department budget, develops and maintains organizational communications such as bulletin boards and newsletters to ensure employees have knowledge of training and development. So I'm only mentioning that is because the human resource management job description or manager job description, the same job code will lead and direct routine functions of human resources for the county, including but not limited to hiring, interviewing staff, administering pay and benefits, leave, ensuring compliance training, assisting directors with performance reviews, employee improvement plans, leadership training, enforcing company policies and practices and ensuring legal compliance and implementation of the county's mission and talent strategies. And then it goes into supervisory responsibilities. These are not direct supervision of personnel. Recruits, interviews, hires and trains staff in conjunction with department heads, provides constructive and timely performance evaluations. In conjunction with department heads handles discipline and termination of employees in accordance with county policy. Administers and oversees the administration of human resource programs, including but not limited to compensation, benefits and leave disciplinary matters, disputes and investigations, performance and talents, talent management, productivity, recognition, morale and occupational health and safety, training and development. Monitors and ensures organizations' compliance with federal, state and local employment laws and regulations and recommends best practices, reviews, modifications, policies, practices and facilitates optimal communication and facilitates professional development training and certification activities. There's other duties listed here. So this is apparently half of what the deputy administrator position is. But I also want to just call to the public's attention that in July of '22, we reclassified the executive assistant position into an assistant deputy county administrator position. And these are the HR management functions for that position. Develop performance criteria and goals for employees based on county overall operating plan. Assist the finance director and deputy administrator with managing benefits. Administration, sorry, benefits administration, benefits communication, open enrollment, overall benefits legislation. HIPAA, ERISA, COBRA, those sort of things and wellness programs. Assist financial director and county administrator with preparation of annual salary and benefits positions. Responsible for workers' compensation, safety programs, satisfying safety legislation. Position and grade scale changes related to cost of living increases, promotions and promotes newly approved positions. Responsible for oversight of staff training programs. Plan, develop, implement and conduct training based on countywide and department needs and miscellaneous responsibilities such as service awards, bulletin boards, employee newsletters, communication, event planning, annual requirement submissions, EEOC, health census and so forth. So a lot of those HR responsibilities are currently in the assistant deputy directors or administrators position. I also want to call out and would like to maybe get some clarity on this is in July of 2022, when we reclassified, the education and experience indicates qualified candidates must have an understanding of human resources, employee and community relations and budgetary process. Candidates will be required to obtain necessary HR certifications and master the salary administration, HRIS, recruiting and staffing, safety training, management development, planning and budgeting within two years of taking this position. Must have at least two years HR experience or five years executive assistant experience, a degree in human resource management, communications or related fields and are preferred. So it seems to me that in particular, some of the functions of this HR management position already exist in the assistant deputy director's position. And are these, I guess, one of the questions, it's the same responsibility. So I'm trying to understand the need for this HR human resource management position. They already exist under a 401 employee. So I'm all for reducing government. I'm all for eliminating positions if we have redundancy. These duties are already covered. I'm all for returning cost savings to taxpayers. So we, I think we have an obligation to, to really take a whole look at the current descriptions of particularly the staff in, in the Hunter House and determine, are they meeting the current job descriptions? And before we do any type of reclassification or reorganization, is it necessary when we already have people in those positions? Besides the fact, I think this might be a little premature, given that we haven't hired a full-time administrator. Yeah, or a permanent county administrator as of yet. That's my comments. Thank you.
All right. Do you may have something?
I, I didn't get down in the weeds on the job descriptions. And so I thank Commissioner Jackson maybe for pointing out duplicate, duplicate, duplication. I can't even say the word tonight. But duplicate job duties in different offices. So, but I do thank Ms. Benitez. I, I think this is a creative way to reorganize the department and stay within budget. But I do think we need to review the job descriptions and narrow things down a bit. But I, I think it's creative thinking and I like it. Of course, the bottom line, that's, that's where we're at.
I'll comment, yeah, I think it is creative thinking as well. I'm, I'm getting the sense that there, there's some interest in some further revisions for the job descriptions. That, that's fine with me. I, I think that's something that the commission wants to wait for, that I'm happy to support a slower timeline. If that's, if that's the consensus here. For me, what I find really compelling here is the. me, what I find really compelling here is the question about attracting the right applicants. And I think that's summarized well in the interim county administrators memorandum here. The question is, how can we attract the right applicants to this position? I know that we've had trouble attracting applicants to work for Jefferson County government for various reasons. And I hope that this will address that and will get the right applicants if we advertise it as recommended. I'm not going to make a motion at this time. If there's a motion made, I'll probably second it. But what I'm hearing is some interest in further revisions.
Yes.
And I'm seeing some nods as well. So with that, I think I'll just go quiet and listen to see what other people have to say.
Yeah, and I don't want to take anything away from Addy. I do think it's creative thinking. I think another concern I have is having a, in the event that you're out or the permanent hire is out for county administrator, is someone from a department or somebody else being able to step up and cover and just fill those roles and answer and serve the commission and the department heads as needed in this. I mean, this is a high-level position as far as county administrator. So I think that really makes me pause for concern is somebody being able to come in and quickly go when they have other responsibilities and duties.
A concern that I had was in this suggestive motion, it was the motion that the county administrator select and bring to the commission for confirmation, a staff member of Department 401 or a department head to serve as that deputy county administrator in addition to his or her current role. And I have a bit of an issue with that. I think that you're I worry about the double dipping look. And I also believe that these jobs are supposed to be noticed properly so that the public can have an opportunity as well to apply. Thank you.
Well, I would like to do a second round on this and maybe have the job descriptions more closely delineated. And hopefully, there wouldn't be, you know, duplication or cross duties. So I'm still open to following through on this initiative. We just need to get the details ironed out.
There's no motion. I said we just proceed with the agenda.
Yeah.
And then we'll do that next time. Talk about that? Yeah, we'll just, we'll proceed with the recommendations, I guess. Well, there's not a motion. Well, we'll just table it. We'll table it.
Well, we, yeah, we don't have a motion on the floor. We can put it back on the agenda.
Yes, absolutely.
Round two.
Round two.
How's that?
All right.
Around three, maybe.
All right. All right, Nathan, what else do you have, sir?
I am informed that there are no matters related to my sub point A about any purchase, sale, or lease of property. I am also informed regarding the magistrate court space. I believe that Laura Kuhn has been working quite hard with engineers to try to figure out some solutions for that. But I think there's just a little bit of additional information that I think she's going to obtain. And so I believe that's probably a better item to deal with maybe next time or when she gets that information. And then C, as I have previously informed you, we did get an advisory opinion about, from the Ethics Commission. And I sent the commissioners copies of that. I have some additional copies here if you want one.
Have a hard copy.
Sure.
I would appreciate a hard copy.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
And
if there have.
So the Ethics Commission essentially, as you'll recall, we had tried to get this opinion at one point, and they informed me that the planning commission had to ask for the opinion or join in the opinion for them to give it to us. The planning commission chose to join in the opinion. And so they brought the issue before the Committee on Open Governmental Meetings at the Ethics Commission. I guess I would say that they, they answered the question about do the committees have to follow all of the same requirements of the Open Meetings Act that like the county commission or the planning commission would have to follow? And they answered that with a resounding, it depends. And so, and so essentially, without going through the whole opinion, which, you know, you all can do, and I can answer questions that you may have, but essentially, they're saying that if the committees facilitate interaction between the planning commission staff and consultants, and then present progress reports back to the planning commission, that doesn't involve making decisions, then basically, they're not governing bodies under the Open Meeting Act. If the planning commission has delegated authority to the committees to make recommendations to the staff or consultants, then they are governing bodies. And so then they would fall under the same, the same procedural requirements that the full planning commission or the county commission would fall under. Same thing with if the committees, and they say it a different way, slightly different issue, but it says the committee holds it when the, the ethics committee holds it when the committees, the planning commission committees merely facilitate interactions between planning commission staff and consultants, or present progress reports to the planning commission, such gatherings may be held in private because they are not public meetings under the Open Meetings Act. But if it goes on to say if the committees make recommendation to planning commission staff or consultants on policy, then basically it is, it should be follow the same guidelines and procedures as the planning commission. And they said each committee must determine prior to their meeting based on the purpose of the meeting, whether it needs to, whether it's going to be a meeting that falls under the procedural requirements of the Open Meetings Act or not. So definite, maybe, and it depends. But to summarize it all, I think it just depends on if, if the committee is just there to listen and maybe make, work out, and facilitate meetings between staff and consultants, or just to listen and report back to the planning commission, then they do not need to follow the Open Meetings Act requirements. If they're doing more than that, especially if they're making recommendations to staff or consultant as to what they should do, then they do need to follow. And then as a final comment, I would say all of this is moot because the planning commission is working toward making all of those committee meetings subject to the same procedural requirements as the Open Meetings Act. And none of the committees are meeting right now. And we are working, as we discussed the last time, we're working on adjusting the bylaws to the planning commission with many of your recommendations. And we're going to be taking that back to the planning commission, hopefully at their next meeting. And then we'll bring those bylaws back to you for approval.
I think it's important to remember that any time a group is meeting, in order to discuss what's going on in the county, you should never try to hide it from the public. And I can't imagine a single instance when that would be a good idea. And I understand what I'm hearing about, you know, you're not subject to, or you don't have to, or whatever. Do better. Always be open. There should never be an occasion when people are gathering to discuss what's going on in the county. And the public should not have any, any business knowing what's going on. The public should always have, have knowledge and understanding of what's going on in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I think this is fascinating. I think it's a really big deal. I'm, I love this topic. I know some people could think it's incredibly boring, but I really love it. I think sunshine laws are super interesting. And I just want to call the public's attention to page five of six. There's a second to last paragraph in bold text. I want to read it one more time. If the committees make recommendations to planning commission staff or consultants on policy or administration, such as the contents of an ordinance or budget, and the staff or consultants make recommendations to the planning commission on these same matters, then a quorum of those committee members may not meet with planning commission staff or consultants outside of a properly noticed public meeting. So the question was raised over the past couple of months, what does it mean to take action? It's not required to have a public meeting if you're not taking action. But what's an action? And I think this paragraph answers that question. If the action is a recommendation that the commission will act upon, that's an action that requires an open meeting. So I'm very grateful to the Ethics Commission for providing this explanation. I'm also grateful to the planning commission for addressing this issue with an update to its bylaws and its procedures. When this was first raised, I don't remember if I made the motion, if somebody else made it. I think I might have seconded it. I don't remember. But I was very much in favor of it. And I said at the time, regardless of what the Ethics Commission opinion is, I think we ought to have the meetings be open and just go above and beyond. Looks like we're doing that regardless, but it looks like it's actually required. So that's the end of this story for now. But I think it's a win. Terrific.
Well, that is a very good point, Pasha. The problem is that it wasn't happening before, and there were too many instances of secrecy and people trying to hide things that they were doing from the public. And I'm thankful, too, that the planning commission have come back with rewritten bylaws. It's something I stated over and over again, that public comment should always be allowed. This is the, this is the, this is where we live. This is something that is, there are, there are topics that go in front of the planning commission that are important to residents of this county. And whether you feel like sitting there and listening to them or not, people have a right to say them. And I'm not speaking to you, of course, because I don't, you're not on the planning commission. But that's my point. People always have a right. We are servants. We are public servants. We serve the public. That's our job. And so I appreciate this. I'm glad that there is going to be some more transparency over there. And I really hope it continues.
Anything else?
Mr. Crocker, you mentioned the point. Is there any action that we need to take at this point? It's just, it's happening already. Could I sum it up accurately by saying that?
The county commission reviewed the proposed bylaws from the planning commission and made some suggestions. And we're taking those back to the planning commission. I'm in the process of discussing some of those issues with the staff of the planning commission and adjusting those bylaws to take your comments into account.
That's right.
And some other things. And so we're bringing that back to the, to the planning commission at the next meeting, I hope. And then they will, of course, it's up to them what they do. But I assume that they will agree on a version of those bylaws and send them back to you.
Thank you. Well, I'm eager to mark it into the books. Thanks for your work on this. And thank you to the planning commission on this. And thank you to the Ethics Commission for the opinion.
Thank you to the residents who pointed out the problems with what was going on at the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, Commissioner Croft, for reminding me to say thank you to residents. Absolutely. And Christine Marshall. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have anything else? All right, here, nothing. If there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.